I'd like to please first have everyone to stand right. Do you want me to recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kevin, can you please do your call?
Hey, David.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Uh, Colton.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Abby Wilder.
Here.
Will you all give the chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting held on May 21st?
Make a motion to accept them as emailed.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side. Alright. Jamie, you want to go first? Alright. We have, uh, an event form, I believe, and then some discussion over the veterans banners.
Yeah. So, the event form is for the Homestead Firework Display, which has happened the past few years. It's 50 cal fireworks next semester, and it is going to be on June 29th, 2024, and that's a Saturday. Um, he's asking to close the stone drive in the middle of Homestead. Um, starting at noon, he'll start setting up, and then the show actually starts around 9:55 and ends at 10:30. And he does have all the signatures and he'll send me the insurance.
Okay. Yeah, they've done it for the last couple of years, and, uh, it sounds like it's been a big hit in that neighborhood. So...
Motion allow them to do it again?
I'll second. Motion is second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same side. Okay.
Okay, and then the Daughters of the American Revelations, they, um, reached out. They're wanting to asking about 2025 if the city is favorable of getting more veterans banners for next year. Um, they did ask if they could allow non-uniform pictures for this next cycle, because last time they were having some issues getting the high-quality pictures of uniformed, um, veterans. But other than that, they said they would probably start it in September this year, and it would be first come, first served again. Um, and right now, they have 30 banners left. They just put up more brackets, so they're able to get more, um, and they have a donor that would actually be able to donate more funds to get more brackets if we have space around that.
It's been very well received. It looks nice. I've been very happy with what they've done so far. And, uh, if they have issues with picture, they can ferret that out themselves. But, um, I would make a motion to absolutely let them move forward to the next year.
Yeah, I agree. Second.
Okay. The motion is second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same side.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we had Brett Miller to discuss Lake Shore Expansion, but, uh, he had called and asked to be taken off the agenda today, so, uh, that was scratched. So, our next discussion is over, uh, pet welfare. Um, I received a call from, uh, Sean Brown. Is Sean Brown here? Okay. If you don't mind, introduce yourself and give your address and sit right there.
My name is Sean Brown. I live at 127 North 16th Street in Decatur, Indiana. And my, uh, concern is today with the animal welfare.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to know, in the chapter 90 of the Decatur law, why felines are not mentioned at all?
No idea.
There's no protection for, of any kind for these animals. They're out there being shot. They're being hit by cars. One was given CTR. Another cat was shot three times and died. There's no law protecting these animals whatsoever. And I want to know why.
So, I'm not even sure what animals are on there.
I, I think it's important to have a discussion to circle back to last year. On February 21st of 2023, Kurt brought to the city council ordinance, Chapter 90, for revisions. It was during that time that, I believe, people in this audience came in opposition of what he was going to change in the ordinance. Uh, the minutes from that, uh, meeting said that we were having this discussion about this ordinance, and a group of citizens were present showing concern about the ordinance. After a lengthy discussion, the group of pet owners and council members, the mayor, Mayor Rickards, stressed the importance of working together to improve this ordinance and to not battle over social media. At that point, we stopped the meeting. We tabled ordinance, which I believe still today sits on Kurt's desk unamended. The group of people who were here that night were supposed to work with the mayor and Kurt over the last year and a half to make changes to this ordinance and bring it back to the council. So, that's where we stand with that ordinance.
Okay.
So, the people who came that night were supposed to work with the mayor and Kurt to improve that ordinance.
And we had one meeting. I believe Kathy was there.
So...
And that was the only meeting we had. I left it open for people to come to...
Are you talking about the three pet rule?
Yes.
I'm talking about that is in that, but that's a complete ordinance, that the welfare pet people and Kurt and the mayor are going to work together because that's what they wanted. So, we agreed to allow them to do that.
Okay. And then I would like to address, uh, Chapter 130 miscellaneous offenses. 130.01, firing guns. A pellet gun is still a gun. It can reach through windows and hit people.
It's not a gun defined by Indiana law.
But it is.
It is not a firearm as defined by Indiana law.
But it still fires a projectile either way.
It is not considered a firearm after you have to go off the factual definition.
Okay, well, if that's the... If that's the case, then I would like to have pellet guns, BB guns, bladed edge weapons of any kind to be added to Chapter 130. There's animals out there being shot viciously.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know. I think state law supersedes that. And I don't think you can, you, you, you cannot in your own city make it illegal to fire a weapon inside your state limits. The state did this more than 10 years ago.
That, that just seems unethical.
You can talk to a state legislator about it.
Well, I mean, that's just wrong. And even in Section 130.02, it says, the first four words is, "No person shall slaughter." Somebody's out there slaughtering animals.
But you, you made a comment earlier about cats being hit by cars.
Yes.
Okay. You're asking us to protect, put protection in there for cats being hit by cars.
Right.
What exactly are you saying?
Slow down. You can change the law.
We have speed limits. I'm not sure what you're saying. How are we supposed to protect cats that are being hit by cars?
Well, in reality, you can't because they just come out. But I'm, what I'm talking about is...
Cats shouldn't be out in the road.
Being fired at by pellet guns and...
Okay. That's a whole other story, but that's what you said. You said we need to protect these animals, and you mentioned being hit by cars.
I mean, it seems like to me like you guys don't even care.
I think a lot of us are pet owners, and I care, I care tremendously about my pet that I take care of, and I wash over every day, and I feed and water it every day, and I know where it's at all the time.
Right.
I take care of my pet, and I love my dog.
Well, I'm sure you do.
So, don't say that we don't care.
I can say whatever. This right here is the one that I can't even talk about because it's in review.
That's right. There is a case right now. There's an investigation. Our police officers did their job, passed off the prosecutor's attorney, and that's where it's at.
Okay, but I still haven't gotten a police report on that. Why is that?
I have no idea.
In any case, the investigation is the prosecutor's office.
Uh-huh.
Is not the Republican Public Relations. It is a investigation under review. That is how the prosecutor's office and my department works.
Okay.
Now, I've seen from the social media posts and a firestorm that was created over this, and it is upsetting that the animal is still in this man.
Fair.
However, what I saw transpire on Facebook was filled with ignorance and assumption, saying that we didn't do our job, a report wasn't taken, not enforcing the law. And a lot of these are coming from you, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's ignorant.
And there's no accountability.
It's not ignorant when he didn't, when he didn't take my...
Let me finish. It's created an entire firestorm amongst the community of the city here right now, all based off assumption that we didn't do anything about it, that we're not enforcing federal law. We can't enforce federal law. We are police officers in the state of Indiana. We're not federal officers. There, in no world can we enforce federal law.
Okay, I'll go there.
The other thing is that we didn't take a report. That's also completely inaccurate. I have right here the timestamp of that report. In less than 24 hours, that report was completed and sent to the prosecutor's office. Yet, there you are on social media creating this gigantic firestorm of false information.
False information?
And not one person has ever reached out to my department over this to express their, how upset they are or their disconcern with it.
I called your department twice.
I have never spoken to you, sir.
No, I didn't speak to you. I spoke to one of the receptionists there, and he said it was still under review. And I called the prosecutor twice.
When matter of review. That's how these things work. I get we live in an instant gratification society, but that is not how things operate in the judicial system. This report is in review. The prosecutor will look at it. That's how this works. We can't just arrest somebody for this particular crime.
Even though that I saw.
Correct. That was explained to you by Sergeant Claude Sheehan, the scene. He very, very clearly explained to you what the misdemeanor, exception to the misdemeanor is. The certain misdemeanors we can and cannot arrest on sight for.
He did not.
This particular, yes, he did.
No, he did not.
This particular crime does not fall within that. Therefore, we have to do a report, send it to the prosecutor's office, they review it, and they can, they can or may not file the charges. That decision falls upon that office. Regardless whether we would agree with it or not. Trust me, there's cases I see at the prosecutor's office that I don't agree. We don't file it. But we're not judge, jury, and executioner.
No, I didn't. And that's not what, what I'm saying.
I think stringing them up is one of the comments that I see on social media.
Well, yeah, that wouldn't be my...
It may have not been, but it was from your doing of you creating this.
Because you're serious about it.
By fueling all this false information.
It's not false information when I saw it.
A lot of what you put out there was false information.
No, it was not. And that's what Sergeant Claude Sheehan, that I told you.
I, I've, I've been doing this stuff for very many, many years. I know what the law states, and yes, what your state, it's false information.
Really? I got 53 laws right here. 53.
How many are federal?
One.
Okay.
I have one. And I have two state codes right here that they didn't even bother. Your officer didn't even wrote down one state code and nothing else.
He doesn't have to because we know what the law is, and these are the state codes that they're operating off of. And again, we can't arrest on spot for it. It is a misdemeanor. That's how the law works, sir.
Alright.
The law is written in a specific way, and we're bound to enforce it in a certain way, that specific way. We have to, we have to play by the rules. The criminals don't have to. You do.
I'm done.
Okay. Um... So, will you please pick that up and not throw trash in here?
You go sign for later.
Go ahead. See, this is, this is, here's the problem. Our police officers did their job. They did everything they were supposed to do, filed the report within 24 hours to the prosecutor's office. Everything was done exactly where it was supposed to be. Instead, people decide to go put false claims on social media and cause all kinds of problems. That's a problem. Okay.
Well, I'm concerned maybe we need to create a ordinance about feeding these stray cats, perpetuating the ongoing issue versus anything else. Then what's the solution? Then what is the solution?
I don't know. What we're trying to do, we're trying to get them fixed so they aren't the worst prey. We're trying to keep them so they aren't bothering everybody that hates them. I would say that.
Hold on, hold on a second. We're, we're still in the city council meeting. We, I, we have a level of decorum here. Whoever is next that signed up that wants to speak, please come to the microphone. Just please introduce yourself and your address.
Kathy Hedrick, board member of... I am, that's, that's a good issue. There is an issue. We need a solution.
I agree. I agree. So, Kathy, I commend you for coming to that first meeting. But like Scott Murray said, we, we, I asked, everyone was yelling and screaming at me, and I said, "Let's work together."
Yeah.
We had one meeting and only two of you showed up.
Right.
People like, there's, there's 50 of them posted on Facebook. Two people showed up, and there was never another meeting. Never another meeting. We, I asked, I asked the public to help write the ordinance. I want your help. Because I love to work with people, and no one came.
I thought we came to a conclusion, for to stand firm on the three pet rule. That's all that we talked about. I did not know there was more that we were supposed to do.
Well, the thing was, when, when he was making changes to the, to the ordinance, he wasn't changing the number of pets. That's not at all what they were doing. Everyone freaked out because they thought that's what he was doing, or we were doing. No one was changing the number of pets. No one was changing at all.
I'm totally confused on that.
Yeah. So, what we said is, "Let's rewrite the ordinance together so it works for everyone." And no one, you two, two of you came.
Yeah.
One meeting, and then we never had another one. No one else even bothered to call, ask where the ordinance was, ask how I can help. No one does. They would rather just go to social media and yell and scream about that they don't understand, and we're waiting here, we're waiting to write the ordinance for everybody's benefit. We want, I mean, I love what you guys do. You know I do.
I, I know you do.
I know, so I'm not, I'm just saying, we're asking for help and...
I actually appreciate you working with us, and I did mention that on social media.
Right. I understand.
I did say that.
I understand. I understand.
Go talk to them.
Right. I've received zero phone calls and zero emails about any of this.
We, I've tried to call you several times, and your secretary always helps. I mean, you're out.
Well, I am a lot.
Okay.
I am. Did you leave a message?
She, no, I didn't leave enough because she didn't answer. I thought I wanted to talk to you.
You know, I talk to people every day, all the time. I have messages. I have hundreds of emails a day. I'm, my door is always open, and I return calls. I always return calls. You have to leave a message. If I, if I don't know that you called, then I mean, how am I supposed to call you back?
Isn't your secretary...
I don't have a secretary. I don't have a secretary. They will ask you, "Do you want to be sent through the voicemail?" And it's like every single time. If you say no...
Miranda is out the audience, posted on social media recently, and I appreciate your post. To me, a solution is if you love the animals, catch them and have them fixed.
We've been preaching that for years.
Yes.
Yet some, and I don't want to point out people specifically because it's not necessary. All they do is feed them. They don't catch them and fix them. They feed them. They care about cats, so they feed them. Nobody needs to go to Hannan Upman and feed stray cats. They live next to a woods.
They make messes on our fields and our dugouts all over out there.
So, there's the geese.
What's that?
The geese.
Well, there's a season on geese. I mean, people get rid of them at times.
And they're animals. There are geese all year round there.
Everyone hates the animals, they hate it.
Okay.
So, the population is not without them.
So, we get, we get more call, we get, honestly, we get more calls about stray cats and people that are mad about their properties, their mulch being torn up, the smells from the cats. We get way more calls about people mad about the stray cats. We really do, all the time.
And, you know what, and I get that. I get that they, some of them can be destructive, especially males, um, you know.
What do you say?
The female, you know what I mean. The females are in season, and the males go crazy.
Yeah?
So...
No, I know.
And they are destructive. They fight with each other. That's what we've been preaching forever.
And you guys have. You guys have.
But, you know what? When 10% out of 100 people are only doing the work, it's not going to get done.
Agreed. Agreed.
Is there any... I have fixed the cats. I've gotten three of them. But if someone in our neighborhood is taking them away...
Excuse me, ma'am.
Wait, wait, wait. This isn't open. You can talk whenever you want. You, you'll have a chance to come up if you want.
Ms. Hedrick, is there an opportunity to possibly work with a community foundation for a public impact grant that could be applied as a subsidy to people who do catch stray cats and get them fixed to get them reimbursed?
They do. Four, four times a year, the community foundation has public impact grants.
I mean, I, I would love to.
It, you know, to come up with a solution or to come up with a way for people to, to potentially incentivize them to, to take a little bit more proactive step in that?
And I think personally, well, board members agree that vouchers would help. Um, if there were vouchers, people could go to...
Well, the same concept, however, yeah.
Around here.
Right.
Um, it's very expensive around here to get, I mean, I just went down $300 to get cat, male cat neutered. That's a lot of money.
Absolutely, which is why probably a lot of people don't take out a permit to do.
Population.
Mm-huh.
You can't spend $300 to get neutered.
Right, so...
So, we have to go, he may go away. Well, he may go away, cut up as a client. They cut a lot of us. And so, we can't take him up like 10 at a time anymore.
What, who's doing it in Portland? I, I, I heard this week that someone in Portland does it for donation. Does anyone know?
There's several programs out there, but it's, it, again, it's out of our community.
Right, right.
We have so many vets here, and I think maybe it'd be great if they worked with us at a reduced price.
Right.
And a voucher together would be amazing.
Right.
And we can cut our numbers down.
Right.
Do, do we have, sorry to interrupt, do you ladies have any, how many stray cats do we have? Have any idea?
In Decatur, Adams County, there's no way to do that, but too many. And you know why it's grown so much? I think COVID. Everything was shut down. You couldn't even get into vet. And then, you know, they slowly started opening up, and it, it just caused a firestorm. That's not the only reason why, but it didn't help.
Right.
So, you know, they've been growing, multiplying over the years. It's, it's going to take more than four board members.
Right.
We can't do it all. You guys have no idea what we do every day.
I mean, I, I know. I'm thankful you guys are here, and I know you do. I know you do. I...
And, you know, we, we kind of have to pour help with our programs, and, you know, we, we don't... We have never received, we, we did this all by donation. We tried to get some ARPA funds, thinking maybe that will help, um, see some of... We actually was getting way, but we can't go with those, and we have, we don't have the money.
Mm-huh.
So, um, we did try for ARPA funds and did not receive any donations.
From the county or city?
The county.
Okay. I see. I didn't mean that's the city. Okay. And I know, um, yeah. Because I know you guys applied to be the shelter for the county.
We did, and we offered a lot more programs.
Right. Alright.
I mean...
And I'm not sure that's all going great. So, uh, I don't know when that contract comes up again. Is it yearly or...
Yearly.
Is it?
I mean, they're better, I mean, I, I, we appreciate the new building. We appreciate the new... We really like the power, our, our, sorry, but the new people, they work with us, but they're also not... I mean, we can't go in there and help or anything like that, and they don't have the program. OGS offers a lot of programs.
Yeah.
Um, T and O, and also, we are, um, a note cell, so we rehabilitate the community cats. Here's one thing I want you to understand. If one of my cats got outside, and somebody dropped that cat, you're going to say, "That's a feral cat. He's going crazy. That's a feral cat." A cat's crazy because it's in a cage that he doesn't know, like, what's going on, what's happening to me. So, we have to be real careful on what we're calling feral cats. Somebody's thrown that cat, and it's just freaking out because it's scared, you know? Some of mine would do that. So, so, on, on this other, you know, shooting the cats, you know, it's all come back. Come on. And that's what we're getting to? This is not the answer to them.
Right.
Um, did it, did any of these, you know, the cats that are getting shot and killed, are being scanned to make sure they're not somebody's cat? You know? You really don't want to kill people's cats. I mean, I guess that if mine got out, every single one of my cats paid a neuter, vaccinated, whatever, but, you know, there's a chance to sneak out. I would be devastated. They didn't even check for a microchip to look for a funder before killing my cat. So, you know, we do have to, we have a lot of people who shoot cats.
We don't.
Right.
No, I'm not saying, you know what I mean.
Some people might, but we don't.
Well, I, I know. I get that.
I don't want to cut you off, but... I know we have others that might want to speak, so...
I hope they do.
Well, yeah.
Again, set, please set up a meeting. We have to talk a lot more.
We will. I promise you. We'll be here.
Okay. We don't want to... Um, either side of the spectrum.
Hi, my name is Miranda Merk, and I'm with the House of Adams County also. And, um, I guess I was a little confused on the ordinance thing, but now that we know, we can move forward with that. Um, I just wanted to apologize for anything on social media that might have been on our part.
I don't believe it was your part.
I've used your name specifically as some in this discussion are reasonable. You have been reasonable, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. I wasn't sure what to expect with that, but I at least wanted to show up and show support, so, um... I, I do want to let the public know, and I think most of you do know, that the, the antithesis is staying neutered. And we do work with a vet that will do it for $45. We'll do a, a community cat for $45. They will stay neutered the cat. They will microchip the cat. They will ear tip. Um, and they will give them a three-years rabies vaccine.
Okay, let me ask that. So, why did Kathy just pay $300?
That's the, I think she's talking about humane or way, and I'm talking about like a, a vet around here.
Okay, and I'm just asking from my, if you said 45, and she paid 300, that's...
That's for me, and I didn't want him ear tipped. This is my personal cat.
Okay. Okay.
I've been trying to do it for people for 10 years. I've been trying to transport for them for as many residents as I can, but my time is limited too, and the public is welcome to do it. And that's what I really, we have really been trying to teach people. Um, there is a vet department will do it for $45, and if you need assistance, um, they can offer assistance also. And if you don't know how to get assistance, we can lead you in the right direction. So, we're really, really wanting to push people to do this themselves, stay in neutral.
Is there any chance of a local vet trying to help the community and saying...
We were kind of hoping maybe you guys would help us.
Well, but that's, that's, we have, because we don't know these things.
Yeah.
So, we need discussions with you and the experts.
We're having much luck with the local vets saying they'll give us a deal on community cats or whatever. So, we thought maybe if somebody on the up and up, you know, got us in there a little bit, you know, helped us out, might to find a vet, that would do it.
We have talked to them.
Yeah, we have.
Again, we'll have a meeting. We'll talk some, about some of this stuff sometime.
And again, my apologies for any confusion on social media.
You don't need to apologize for those people.
Thank you. I think that's all that I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Anyone else want to speak?
Please, I'll go ahead.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Troy Cressley. I live at 527 Lumberwatch Trail in the Stratton addition. Obviously, we have a lot of animal lovers in here. I am one included. I have a cat. Our problem in our addition is, is there's so many cats that run, I'm not going to say feral because our people getting upset. But I'm not here to argue. If people want to have animals, that's fine. I don't care. But when I'm sitting in my own backyard on my swing, and all I can smell is cat urine coming from a particular house that I have reported to the Board of Health, because one, I don't feel I should have to breathe it, and I can't imagine how the people that are living in that house, how sick they probably are from the ammonia smell. I mean, it's strong. On nice days, we can't have our windows open because that smell travels through the house.
You're not the one that's complaining about it.
And I understand that, but something does have to be done. Pause for this particular house. It's come out, track the animals, fix them, but draw them back. And didn't get rid of the problem because they brought the animals back. So, the urine smell didn't go away just because they were fixed or neutered. The smell's still there.
Sir, if you had to guess, how many cats does the neighbor have?
Uh, now she's specifically down to three. She had twenty some at one time. As a pet owner, I don't know how many people has twenty cats as a pet, which is fine. I don't care if they got fifty. But I don't feel the community around that particular area should have to smell that. People that walk their dogs, and cats aren't the only problem. People park down at the end of Lumberlost and the gravel lot, that don't live in that addition, they walk their dogs, their dogs poop in the yard, they keep going because they don't live there. Now, most of the people that live there, they pick up after their pets, which is appreciated. I have put a sign out in my yard, about three years ago, I had the law call on me because of what it said. And I'll leave the cuss words out, I put on there, I don't poop in your yard, don't let your dog poop in mine. Well, apparently an animal lover, which I am one, cause I have one, they called the law on me, the cop pulls up, reads the sign, laughs, drives away. Perfect. I had a guy come up to me and shake my hand, thank you. I'm tired playing with dog poop in my yard, I don't have a dog. So, it's just not cats. It's people that don't live in the community that are coming in and doing this stuff. But for health reasons, to sit and have to breathe that horrible smell all night long? Because you got, you forgot to close your window and the wind's coming out of the south, and it just travels through the.
And that's one, in this discussion with the cause and mayor, this committee.
Right.
That's one thing I want to address, is the number of pets in a house. I think there's a reasonable number, and it's not like we're knocking, gonna go around knocking on doors, saying you have too many dogs, you have to get rid of one. But the responsible number, I think Portland was six pets.
Right.
I think is an example. I too don't think anybody needs twenty pets in a house.
Right.
In Decatur, or even outside, I mean. So, I would like, personally, I'm one person here to see a number put on domesticated animals in that.
I mean, I know.
I think a reasonable number.
Board, Board of Animal Health, I know their regulations is, like, for instance, cats, they're, you're allowed one cat per bedroom. So, if you got a three-bedroom house, you can have three cats, you got a four-bedroom house, you can have four cats. But I'm not here to argue the laws or, just, I'm here because of the respect for other people around.
Right. Well, I think, I think Matt, the word, Matt said it was responsible. I think we talked about this last year, there's a difference between responsible pet owners and people who just sit out a bowl of food and, and consider themselves pet owners. If you're feeding twenty-five cats that are running around, just throwing food out there, you're not a pet owner.
You're also feeding raccoons.
And you're not, that's not responsible.
Yeah, we've had that problem, the raccoons, I mean, we got deer that come in our raccoon yard. So, proceed, you're.
Coming in.
I'm not here to argue, start arguments, I'm not on Facebook, no social media whatsoever, cause I don't like the drama. I like to be able to just be in, in my own property, mind my own business, without having to smell or hear or. I mean, I don't care if a dog's barking, I mean, no big deal, I mean, as long as it ain't going all night long, but.
Troy, I think you're, I've been, so I, I, but thank you, thank you for your response.
We have some prevention, and I just say, if we don't, we don't have a building, and if we have nowhere to take these cats. They have to go back.
Right.
We do look for farms, and, you know, if we can't find them good or nasty, they have to go out.
Right, right.
There's nowhere else to take them, so, going the old step, you know, like, we wouldn't take, we have nowhere to take them.
I understand, I understand, I, I, I'm here to tell you, I don't have the answer, I, I don't. Cause I get, like I said, I get calls like this all the time, that people complain, yeah, people complain that they're tearing, tearing up their yard and making accidents in their yard, I'm like, I don't know what, I don't know what the answer is. People should keep their pet on their own property.
I agree.
And that's. I know, I know. Anyone else wanna speak? Yes, come on up, please introduce yourself.
Carolyn Springer, my husband was animal control eleven years old. I'm a farmer.
Yep.
He was very humane with animals, I was with him lots of times when we picked up animals. Um, it doesn't get down to this, but wildlife and that, our animal control now will not pick up human or anything. Cat picked up three and four and five a week and took them out, and should release them from the theater, which we live in this city, and we have a right to be without wild animals too, that they roam freely. Possum and tume, because I have picked some up, ninety, seventy-nine years old.
I had one in my garage in my trash, and it scared the hell out of me the other night.
Well, I'm better telling you, I do all that, I collect, trap these animals, but these cats don't wanna be where they're at. The people who drop these cats off, if there were any possible way, they are the ones putting their butts in, in slings. These cats don't want to be out there running loose. I am a mother, you might say, because my little dog died a year ago, that was my wife. And this cat, the tracker on the corner, that has been in here before, that was told not to trap anymore because he caught so many that the shelter didn't have any place to put them. He has trapped out twenty-four seven, plus he sprays them with vinegar, and he gets away with it. I feed mine so well, so they don't go down and get in his trap. I've got three babies of this mama inside. I take care of them, they love me, and they stay right in my vicinity because I take care of them.
That's a responsible pet owner.
But, I've got one that's adopted me now in the last couple of weeks. He just came. What, what can you do? He's fixed, because I know he's the one I took several months and have fixed. I'm aware, I still take care of these, they're eating our house and home, but if you don't keep them fed, they're gonna go somewhere else, searching for food, they're gonna be in your trash, they're gonna be hungry.
Right.
And I would, if, if people have smells, I feel bad for them, because I know that smell. I bought some stuff out at Walmart and sprayed my bushes from the ferals that are across the street that come, they're tuxedo cats, and they pee something terrible, I spray these spots and it goes right away. But, there has to be a solution without killing them. Years ago, like, Hap was alive, there were cats behind the old gurbers, they get away with them. Because he told me, and he did not lie, he was a minister. That is not the solution. Solution has to be somewhere with people. It begins with the people. The people are very irresponsible, and they do it to their kids if they have a chance to turn them loose too, some people would. So, I'm sorry.
No, I, you're, you're exactly right.
I love these animals, and I take good care of them, they're, I call them, they come for supper. I call them, they come for breakfast. I babysit for a great-grandson, seventy-nine years old. I call them at five o'clock in the morning because they need to eat before I leave. They come and eat. I take very good care of my animals. And some people can't do like I do. But I, and they're all fixed, no babies at our house. Three plus the one that's adopted me. Now, I've got a couple more that are coming, but what can I do?
I don't know.
I need to start trapping, but I can't trap them and then make an appointment and get a voucher. This isn't anything, again, a home, but I can't, I don't know how to do that. And as for the vet's indicator, three hundred and, three hundred and fifty dollars for taking out a sex organ, it's almost, it's unreal. And so, it's never gonna get any better, as long as we have situations like this.
Right, well, again, I think that's why we'll, hopefully have some future meetings and see if we can come together with some ideas.
And I.
But again, I need people to show up.
I will, if I know what's there.
I'm glad to meet them, some of our council members.
I don't have anybody at home.
Okay.
I can't go to any of them.
Alright.
So, um, but I know there needs to be a situation.
Again, if you, if you call, please leave a voicemail.
I will.
And I'll call you back.
But I, I know there needs to be a situation, because I've got them coming across now, I've got the ferals rolling in my driveway. I have mine, I have feral pigs, I have the one that was so wild, he rolls on my feet. And this, the white one, everybody would love him.
Do you feed the feral cats?
What?
Do you feed the feral cats?
I do, because they come across and get my pit, pit cats.
So, should you, I'm learning here.
Okay.
Should you feed the feral cats?
Well, they have to eat.
I'm not asking if they have to eat.
Yes, I feed them.
I'm asking, should you feed the feral cats?
Yes, if they're hungry, they shall eat them. My granddaughter says, Grandma, you feed them, they will come. And there's a place on Twelfth Street, they say that it's overrun with cats. Rick Rainhardt had that business back there. I went back there hunting a cat. It does, I didn't have a lot of them the day I went, but they say there are lots of cats that hang out over there. And getting back to people killing cats, there's a woman over on Adams Street, to be true, put out antifreeze. What does that do to your cat, it sweetens taste? There's people that put out powder, you get it on their paws, they lick it and they die. That could be your pet that accidentally might have seen go near a door. But your pet could accidentally got out that door and licked that stuff, and it's dead. People don't have, do you know, our Sunday school lesson last week said, God created all these animals, and Adam named them. These are God's creation. We didn't create these animals. They don't wanna be running loose like they are.
Right.
They'd probably rather be dead than to be out not knowing where their next meal's at, if somebody's gonna shoot them, somebody's gonna put poison out. They don't want that.
Right, right. I don't mean to cut you off, but.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. Thank you, thank you for your responses.
I don't know if my husband would have minded or not, if people were alive.
Yeah? Anyone else?
My name is Janelle Young, I live at seventeen twelve Fairway Drive, and I am a responsible pet owner. I am here to speak about responsibility to the owners. I've hear people saying their cat got somewhere and got into antifreeze. Their cat got somewhere, it got ran over, my cat was poisoned, my cat. I adopted two cats, one from Paul's, I adopted my second one from Eddie Benikitty. In both instances, I had to sign a contract saying my pets will stay inside. My pets must be stated or neutered. My cats will not get hit by cars, they will not get in someone's poison, they will not destroy someone's landscaping, they will not get in a child's sandbox. Because they are indoor cats. This has to start with owners. These are your pets, it is your responsibility to make sure they are not harmed. They say they doordash. I've had my one cat for five years, she's never attempted to doordash. She knows she stays inside. My other cat, three years, never doordashes. They are happy, they are tame, they are well-fed, and they are well taken care of, and will not be hit by a car or shot by someone because they're caged. Because I am the responsible pet owner. I would like to see some type of an ordinance, because I have never been able to understand why a dog must be on a leash or must be contained to a fenced-in yard. Why is this different for a cat? A cat can be trained to walk on a leash. Is it easy? No. But you start when it's a kitten. My cat goes in a playground, in a little playpen, if I want it outdoors. It goes in the playpen, it never touches the ground. I would like to see some type of a leash law for cats. I know many are saying that's not gonna happen, and that's okay. But something needs to start with homeowners too, and pet owners. It is our responsibility. Thanks.
Thank you, thanks. Anyone else? Okay. Anything from Department head, it's Jerry.
Um, construction on, uh, North Fifth Street's begun with, uh, several sidewalk replacements, sidewalk replacement, water service improvements. And the street's a little rough right now, sidewalks are taken out, but we are progressing nicely. Um, hopefully within the next week or so, we should be out of that area. Um, with several new sidewalks, so it's, there, there is sidewalk money left, if, if anyone's interested in participating, um, please contact me soon. Uh, we, we have, uh, about twenty-one right now on the program. So, under contract, so there's, um, and now for probably eight or ten more sidewalks. That is a bunch of good funds for this year, so. We're trying to get a lot, just worked ahead of the paving, um, on our, on our big CCMG, uh, maybe crosses, uh, great match program, uh, for all the resurfacing. We're pushed out a little bit on the resurfacing, uh, which is gonna help us, you know, address issues that, that we know are there, and just make sure that we're, we're never gonna permit going back and, and re-digging something that's just, it happens. Um, but we're trying to limit that, that amount of time that, that we, that chances of them having to go back. You see the summer help out and about, um, eight girls are doing it on the road as well. They're working a lot of ground and a lot of curb paving, just doing a lot of general cleanup, so. A lot of those little spruce up projects that we don't like to see are, are underway.
Yep.
I have a whole list of order to do, there's several things that, uh, we'd like to get out there in the next month or so.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Kevin G. Jeff.
Uh, this Friday, we start our school out, schools outdoors, we run from eight to eleven-thirty, all the Fridays in June. The, the general public's invited to come down on Fridays from eight to eleven-thirty, and we also have started dipping out the patients to fill our open slot for the curfew.
What is the age, what do you have to, what age do you have to be?
Twenty-one, the minimum is twenty-one and maximum forty, unless you are in the military with twenty years of service and honor discharge, then I give you an extra six months, so forty-six months.
Okay. Kurt. Here. Okay.
Um, we're just continuing to do some CSO work in the area, and Josh, here at the evening, like, he's kind of gave the work, uh, talked about, some areas to be.
Okay, okay. Council.
Um, yeah, so I had a, um, concerned citizen of Decatur, obviously, reach out to me about the speed limit on South Mercer, as you're coming into the city. Where the River Greenway Trail even crosses, um, Mercer, near the hospital. Just that the speed limit is currently forty-five there, and that's pretty fast, it drops.
Change. At the top of the hill, right at Church of God. You take it down to thirty.
Yeah.
Right at Ingers.
And even, um, the visibility there when you're coming off the north side of the trail across, it's not the best when you're looking east. Um, so I don't know what we can do with that. Like, they want it to be dropped to thirty, I don't know what we can do.
Jeremy, that.
That requires a traffic study, you can automatically drop it five mile an hour, but you can't drop, you can't drop it fifteen mile an hour without a traffic study. Um, which that's all doable, um, it's not a big issue to do on it, takes a little time. Uh, but a lot of that was, um, it's probably been seven or eight years going up the study by the, by the county engineer. And called for forty-five at that time. So, we can revisit it, it's, it's no big thing, you know, as developments happen, and, and patterns, and traffic loads increase, that changes the results of those studies. Uh, so it's, it's always open for, um, for review. Now, if you do lower it to five mile an hour, it's not like you can lower five mile an hour of dismeeting and five mile an hour a couple of hours. Um, that's not achieving the plan. Um, so you really have to sit down and do the homework, find your eighty-fifth percentile of the average speed, and that dictates, uh, what required speed limit is.
Is that, is that something that NERC, could NERC do the traffic study, or?
NERC can do it, um, I've done it in the past, and had Tim Markey calculate it, just as a secondary, I'm pretty sure Nate Roomscholz can do the same thing.
Yeah.
I, it take, if, if I do it internally, it just takes somebody else looking at it, that's a casualty.
Yeah. I, I, I was sitting out there today at lunch, and there was a.
I, I was sitting out there today at lunch, and there was a car that went by pretty fast, so, that's a thing, I think, people see forty-five and they go fifty-three. Um, that is a trail crossing, and it is, there's a hill just past it.
And it's wooded.
Yeah.
And there's so much more, you know, wood crush is just growing, 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 you have more people just going out there.
What would be your suggestion? Would you do a drop or serve, you want to drop it to forty, or?
I would say, let's do a traffic study and see what it looks like, and if it still comes back at forty-five, we can drop it five.
Okay.
And then just kind of play the, the system.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you're, there's more and more traffic volume out there every day, so, it's very possible that it could go back at thirty-five. But the standard rule of thumb is in the city limits, it's thirty mile an hour or less than it was.
Jeremy, where's the city road stopped? Does it stop at that county road out there?
That is a city road all the way up to County Road two hundred east.
Is it all the way to two hundred?
Yes. So, we have jurisdiction to change it if it justifies a change.
Right.
And it's just as simple as you may, your board works agreeing, a council also has to agree to it, and then they have to submit an ordinance. So, not saying that it could happen tomorrow, but it, you know, it's probably a month process to you physically have to sit there and then reiterate already.
Right.
I think it's two hours, uh, it's two hours, I think, maybe cars each direction, it's what's required.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you'll work on that, or you'll?
Yeah, I can, I can.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else from council?
Jenny and I had an opportunity to sit down with Kurt, learn a little bit more about his department. He doesn't want.
You can just go out with him.
No, we opted to not, to not go out. Would highly encourage anyone who is looking to do a building project to proactively partner with Kurt and his, and his team. Lot of, uh, lot of good information in that head right there.
Anyone else from council?
Um, speaking of Kurt, Kurt and I started working with a group of youth skateboarders last summer. Um, we have now, Jeremy had a crew pave the skateboard park last fall, Taylor Gage is now pouring some concrete, he's got a couple ramps done, a couple things done. It's not open, it's not open, but we have some other ramps, some half pipes, and some different things, I don't know all the terminology, but some things coming, hopefully here in the next five weeks or so about. So, hopefully mid-July, um, we'll see that thing, we'll see some action over there on the, on the skate park. Pretty excited about that. Um, another thing that I'm just going to get out there, the details are yet to come, but, um, we're going to have a, there's a lot of camps for different sports, uh, we're going to have a fishing camp at the new Kekeanga Lake. Um, as I said, details yet to come, but probably sometime in July. I've been working with some avid anglers from our, from our city, and some sponsors too, so, hopefully in July, we'll be having a couple day thing for, for some of the kids.
Great. Anything, Kevin?
I'm going to motion to pay the claims.
I'll second.
Motion to second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Close the same sign.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign.